Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 13th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Campbell, you lead the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now move on to the roll call of members, and we may have some members roll in here a little bit later. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mike Kincaid, absent. Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Maybe coming later. Yep.
Brent Wheat.
Here.
And Dan Fleming.
And he's on his way as well. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns about the minutes? Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
We approve the minutes.
We have motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. This is Brent. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our minutes are approved. Now we'll move on to our old business. The first item we have up here, it's not technically old business, but the way we'd have to do things, we have to pass this one before we get on to our next item of old business, is Resolution 2018-40, which is the Elmwood Annexation Fiscal Plan. We have Ben Bontrager present this to us.
Good evening, council members. I'll just go over this kind of at a high level pretty quickly for you. As you're all aware, because we've done a handful of annexations here recently, the one part of the process is to develop a fiscal plan that looks at all the costs associated and all the revenue associated with a potential annexation area. So I think the big part of this that we've had discussions about, I think probably three times already, is the bridge that's associated with this project and the costs associated with that. You will find those costs in the capital improvement section of this. The construction cost is approximately $510,000 for a full replacement. That is not, while not needed immediately, will likely be needed in the next, well, I guess depending on how many people drive over, maybe in the next five to 15 years. So that is, that is one of the significant costs associated with this in terms of the other city services. It's fairly straightforward for any of the city services. Capital expenses are minimal associated with this. If you look at, let me find which page it's on. Page 13, this summarizes the costs and also the additional revenue associated with the project based on current assessed values. You get an idea of some of what those costs are. Now, this doesn't necessarily include that bridge cost because we don't have an estimated timetable that it would, that would be necessary, but that does give you kind of an idea of the cost versus revenue summary. That's a real quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. I know we've talked about the capital side of this a couple of times before, but if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions for Ben concerning the fiscal plan?
I got a couple, Ben. Page 5, under the non-capital services, street maintenance, says all dedicated streets and county roads in annexation area are currently maintained by Boone County. I don't think that's the case, so I think we probably ought to-
Yeah, I think you're right.
-draw a line through that.
Okay.
Just to... No biggie, it's just I-
We can clarify that.
Yeah, just strike a line through it. The other one was on page 6, talks about street lighting. And maybe this, maybe this might be in there, but I was looking at where it says, "If approved by the Board of Public Works and Safety, the city pays all costs for installation and maintenance of streetlights." I understand we pay for the streetlights, or I think the maintenance is done by utilities. That may be all related by the city.
That's included in that $8 per month fee that the city would then pay to the utilities.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. So, yeah, that, it is physically maintained by then, but we pay to maintain.
We pay for it.
Yeah.
Okay. I had one more question about the, on page 7. Are we paying $9.35 per month for trash pickup? Cost city currently charges $9.35 per month per household for trash collection and $2 per month for recycling. I thought we were like seven something. I haven't looked at my utility bill.
No, I believe that, I believe that's correct, yeah.
You think so?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I got.
And I have a question on page 6.
Uh-huh.
Parks. Like James Hill Park is not ours. I'll break it out.
Okay.
And then left two of them out. We left them out on those Conservation Club, it's not in there?
Well, it's still technically part of Admiral Longley Park, though. It's still technically part of Admiral Longley Park, so it's-
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's included in that anchor.
And then Reese Park, and Reese Park is not on there either.
Okay.
Well, that needs to be in there, I would think.
Yeah, we can get that added.
Okay.
We need to add to our boilerplate.
Don't change it.
Everything's pretty same all the time.
And we can, and we can, we can have a motion to make those proposed changes.
Yeah.
Motion to amend. Any other comments or discussion concerning the fiscal plan? Again, I know we mentioned the capital cost of the bridge. You also, we also circulated a memo that we believe it's the county's responsibility to repair that bridge, though that's the position that we've been taking.
But also in there, somewhere on one of those pages, it says we're going to share it with them.
That's to be determined. I mean, at this point, there hasn't even been a-
Do we need to put it in there? I don't see how it can be anything but-
It's in there already. There's a sense in there that suggests that it-
Should we take that out?
Theoretically could be shared amongst a number of different funding sources, so-
Well, I understand that, but it's pretty clear that it belongs to the county.
I think we would agree with that as well, but, I mean, Kevin, you want to say anything?
Kevin may want to address that, too.
Well, I wouldn't disagree with, it seems to fit the federal NBIS bridge program that would deem that a county-maintained bridge. I think county still maintains their position that the bridge was, was not in a dedicated public right-of-way, so it was not historically theirs. And I believe they will maintain the position that even if it is now annexed and in a dedicated right-of-way, that they will not accept maintenance of that bridge.
My question is, how can they say that legally?
You know, I'm not sure. That is, that is a legal question that we would have to probably get the city council and county council to, to discuss and to come to some sort of resolution, but that's, that's what I've been told by them, that they-
It's easy to say that, but-
It, it is, and I don't have the, the legal background on matters like that that, that would, would refute that statement or position that they're making. But I am confident in telling you, the position they relayed to me is just because you, you annex, just because you accept that right-of-way does not mean we have to accept maintenance of the bridge.
Even though, even though our position is that it, they should have been maintaining it this whole time, anyway.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Because they have to keep capital bridge fund.
Instead, they're paying the bridge taxes like everybody else is.
Correct.
Why would they not cover it?
Again, you know, I, I think that's a, that's an, that's an argument, that's a discussion that we probably have to have between, between the attorneys for both entities and figure that out.
That needs to be sooner than later, I guess.
It, it does. So the fiscal plan that Ben's put before you, you know, assumes that we are, we are assuming the, the risk associated with replacing the bridge. Yes, we will have funding sources available and grant sources available that could participate.
It's not a question, can we pay for it? That's not the question. The question is legally, should we pay for it? And the answer to me is no. As our lawyers have already sent that paper.
That's, that's our position as well.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying, is so why do we have it still in there that we're going to be willing to share it with you?
Yeah. Again, I'm not stating a legal position. Our attorneys have already stated that. I would defer to them. I'm just relaying the message that has been relayed to me through the, the county officials.
What would, what would you do?
Chris, you want to say anything concerning?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So as we've discussed here this evening, Rob Shine is, of course, the city attorney, not available this evening, but he had reviewed the materials and discussions that we have had regarding the bridge, and it is our take that the county should be responsible for maintenance and repair of that bridge. We're happy to take and have a conversation with the county, the legal folks there, to discuss options and maybe why, discover why they feel counter to our position that, you know, it's not their responsibility and it's never been their responsibility. I just know with respect to the annexation before us tonight, you know, of course, we can't push that out too far, looking into next year, which is before, a year before the census pursuant to the code. So that's kind of our position. It's, again, the, our take is the county, you know, it really should be amended.
But is it, by being in that document, does that put us at a disadvantage?
As long as it, I would, we'd recommend that as long as it is permissive language, not mandatory, with respect to who pays for it, you know, so it could be a source of mixed funding, and it does not have to be mixed funding. Just kind of leave it open to where this matter progresses-
What page is that on?
Moving forward. And I believe that's the way it's written right now, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And I think probably the easiest thing to do is right, it's right now it says will come from a combination, they could just say may come from a combination.
Right. I'd make that change.
Just, just to-
I would also add, I spoke with the, the engineer who did the engineering assessment for the city. He did assure me that the bridge is not in imminent danger of failure. Their main concern is that just the bridge doesn't have the capacity that it needs to have. The weight capacity, the traffic capacity, there's no pedestrian capacity on the bridge. Those are really more, more their concerns on recommending the, the replacement. Is it of an age where we're going to see maintenance issues? Yes. Is it, like I said, it is not, though, in imminent danger of failure.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion from council?
So what are you saying we're going to change it to? On page 9 is where it is.
Yeah, on page 9, about the middle of the paragraph, it's currently anticipated funding for the bridge will come from combination of city funds on hand, county funds on hand, and our state fund. It may just be, just replace will with may.
That's what I wondered, okay.
And then what were the other changes you wanted to make, Dick?
Excuse me?
Do you still have the changes you wanted to make? We can roll that into one amendment?
One would be just to delete that line in page 5 under street maintenance.
Okay.
Or just draw a line through it.
Okay.
The, all dedicated streets and county roads in the annexation area are currently maintained by the county.
Okay, strike that.
Boone County, just need to put a strike through that.
Okay.
The others, I think, are just, question about the, the trash and the other, I don't think that, that big of a deal.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to amend Resolution 2018-40 as suggested?
I'll make a, a motion that we approve the amendments to the financial fiscal impact plan for Elm Swamp subdivision.
Okay. We have a motion to amend Resolution 2018-40. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Resolution is amended. This time, I'm going to have our attorney read the resolution, and then we'll open up for public comment as well, and then we'll have the final vote on the amended resolution.
This is 40.
Yeah, 40.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, this is Resolution 2018-40. It's establishing a fiscal plan for the annexation of certain territory to the city of Lebanon. So the city council of the city of Lebanon is considering annexation of certain territory to the city. The area to be annexed is legally described in Exhibit A to this resolution, which is attached here, too. Pursuant to the Indiana Code, the common council of the city of Lebanon is required to adopt this fiscal plan prior to the passage of the ordinance 2018-13. The required fiscal plan included as Exhibit E, excuse me, Exhibit C, and attached here, too, has been prepared and presented to the council. The fiscal plan has been reviewed and complies with requirements of the Indiana Code. Now, if resolved and adopted by the city council, the fiscal plan would hereby be approved for the area sought to be annexed.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. At this time, would open up the floor for any public comment concerning the Elmwood Annexation Fiscal Plan. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Bob Vickery, and I'm president of the Elmwood HOA, and I'm here tonight to humbly request that the city council accept and grant the resolution for annexation tonight.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-40 as amended.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-40 as amended.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that fiscal plan is adopted. All right, and now we can move on to ordinance 2018-13. This is the Elmwood Neighborhood Voluntary Annexation on second reading.
I, I think we've talked about this a number of times already. One thing I did want to point out, Kevin and I are working out exactly how we set up a procedure in order for each of these property owners to dedicate sufficient right-of-way. So we're, we're still working out exactly how that works upon annexation, but that will be a step that comes, and we've talked with Mr. Vickery about that already, and they're willing to do that. We just need to figure out exactly the, the alignment of that right-of-way so that we have enough room potentially to widen the road at some point way down the road, since it's, it's a fairly narrow road right now, and also the potential to put sidewalk on at least one side at some point in the future when we're doing other work. So we're still working out exactly that alignment of right-of-way, and then we'll work on getting deed of dedication to each one of those property owners to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Any further discussion concerning this ordinance from council? No? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2018-13? At this time, I would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2018-13?
I move that we approve ordinance 2018-13.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that ordinance is approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
Welcome, Lebanon.
Okay, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything, any other old business from the council? No, Mr. Councilman, we, we wanted to hold off on the animal control ordinance-
Right, I've got that information.
So we'll hold that one off for our next meeting.
Yep.
So it's not on old business. So next, we'll move on to new business. Next, I have Resolution 2018-41, which is the Hendrix ERA confirmatory resolution. And I'm not sure who, I think Molly, you presenting that? Are we presenting that? From all I can? Okay.
Good evening, council. Molly Whitehead, Executive Director of the Boonee DC. What you have in front of you is the follow-up from last meeting that we had with the declaratory resolution for the ERA for the approximate one to two acre parcel just outside of the Lebanon Business Park. So tonight's the confirmatory hearing. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have in advance of that.
Any questions from Molly from council? Again, we declared it at our last meeting, this is part of the legal statute that we confirm it now. Any public comment concerning this resolution? Any discussion from council? Okay. Would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-41, the Hendrix, so move to what? So move to approve?
So move to approve ordinance 2018-18.
Okay, we have motion to approve Resolution 2018-41. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that resolution is approved. We had a request that we, that we pull off Resolution 2018-42 for our next meeting, so that one will not be here tonight, heard tonight. So next is Resolution 2018-43, which is Project Cannon Personal Property Tax Abatement Request. I'll turn it back over to Molly Whitehead with the EDC.
All right. Good evening again. Molly Whitehead, Executive Director of the Boonee DC. What you have in front of you is an incentive request on behalf of Steel Green. Steel Green is a startup lawn care company. They assemble and, in some extent, or some examples, design some of the work. Their products will be used by landscapers, by golf courses. These are high-tech machines that they are designing and assembling here in Lebanon. So as I think you're all probably aware, Walter Payton moved out of their facility at 920 South State Road 39. They've now built a new facility down in Whitestown, and Steel Green has moved into that facility. It's just outside of the Lebanon Business Park. With this, with this new startup operations, they are estimating creating up to 58 new jobs. These are wages that are above Boone County average wages, and that's exclusive of benefits. And they expect to have a capital investment around $563,000, and that's in personal property only as they are leasing that facility. What I would recommend that you consider is a personal property tax abatement, a four-year term on that. We estimate that would save the company around $7,900 over that four-year period. Years one and two would be at 50%, and years three and four at 25%. Past that point, the company would be paying the full property taxes. Based on those numbers, we're anticipating benefits to the city and to Boone County over a 10-year period, looking at a personal property tax levy around 33, almost $34,000. And if 20% of the, their employees are Boone County residents, then we're anticipating around $101,000 in local income taxes over that 10-year period.
Molly, can you touch on the Lebanon connection here a little bit? Because I, we don't normally do economic development deals, kind of the small, so to speak, so if you could touch on that and why we wanted to work with this company.
So this is kind of an interesting example. And by the way, before I get too, too much further in my presentation, Bob Meister is here representing the company, so we appreciate him being here tonight. The, the kind of circumstances surrounding this, as many of you are aware, LT Rich was located here in Lebanon for quite some time. They were purchased earlier this year, March, I believe, of this year. And so as a result, this has kind of been kind of a, calling it a spin-off slash new acquisition, kind of, kind of a different situation here of what this company has merged into. Not the same company by any means, different technology, but a different form. This is an instance where you've got some high-tech work being performed here in Lebanon. We want to, to not only encourage this type of development here in our community, but certainly want to be welcoming of that, and certainly want them to expand or consider expanding here in the future. And so this recommendation is also based upon, you know, kind of a good showing on behalf of the city that, that, you know, we, we want them to stay and want them to continue growing here. Yeah, with that, the only other exception I might just mention to you in the SB 1 form, you'll see their list of equipment. The numbers differ from page 1 versus the third page, that list of equipment. The truck and trailer that were mentioned on there have been pulled out, and so the personal property that you see is directly that, what is related to the manufacturing and assembly distribution operations that are here.
Okay. Thank you, Molly. Bob, do you want to come up and say anything?
Hi, I'm Bob Meister, and I've been fortunate enough to know ATS, which is a company that basically helps start Steel Green for about 20 years. And right now, it looks like they have an explosive market. There was a national trade show held last month in Louisville, which I attended, and we, in effect, unveiled our prototype piece of equipment, and it was virtually too deep at the counter for three days. The industry looks like they're accepting this with warm, warm welcome, so to speak, and the projections that we originally set for manufacturing, we're immediately adjusting them to a larger capacity. Now, again, we haven't produced any that we are selling, but we've produced the prototypes, and the companies that we've been dealing with that have been purchasing similar type of equipment have looked at ours and said, "This is, this is a winner." And as I've told ATS, which is the parent company, I've said, "You guys have a winner on your hands here." So I fully expect us, and as a matter of fact, we've already talked with our landlord that we just moved into the building, and we're looking to purchase, or not purchase, looking to expand in about another 25% space sometime in February. So things are looking very promising with respect to employment, at least for Steel Green in Lebanon. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being here, Tiswell.
Thank you.
Any questions for Molly? Any discussion from council? Any public comment? Okay. At this time, Chris, would you mind reading Resolution 2018-43 force, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, Resolution 2018-43. So pursuant to the Indiana Code, the city of Lebanon, through its common council, has the right and opportunity to evade the payment of real property taxes for real estate located within an area declared by the council to be an economic revitalization area, and also evade the payment of personal property taxes within that same area. The council adopted its Resolution 2018-31, that was the declaratory resolution on September 10th, 2018, pursuant to the Indiana Code, declaring the area whose boundaries are located within the boundaries of the city, described in Exhibit A attached here, too, as an economic revitalization area. The council, after following all applicable procedures of the Indiana Code, took final action adopting Resolution 2018-33. That was the confirmatory resolution on September 24th, 2018, confirming the declaratory resolution, thereby establishing economic revitalization area. Steel Green Manufacturing has filed with the council a statement of benefits. It's a Form SB 1, attached here, too, as Exhibit C. This council has reviewed Form SB 1. The improvement of the area will be a public utility and will be to the benefit welfare and welfare of the citizens and taxpayers of the city. Now, if it's resolved and adopted by the council of the city, the following would occur. The proposed project will be located in the area, which has been confirmed as an economic revitalization area pursuant to the Indiana Code. The Form SB 1 submitted by the applicant would thereby be approved. Based on the information in the Form SB 1, the council would make the following findings. The estimate of $563,650 as the cost of the new manufacturing equipment to be installed is reasonable for projects of that nature. The estimate of hiring 58 new individuals who will be employed can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed project. The estimate of $2,320,000 for the aggregate annual salaries of those individuals who will be employed can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed project. The other benefits about which information has been presented to this council are benefits that can be reasonably expected to result from the project, and the totality of the benefits is sufficient to justify the granting of personal property tax abatement to the applicant. Further, the personal property tax deductions for the project would be hereby approved, again, if ordained by this council. Pursuant to the Indiana Code, the council shall cause to be filed a certified copy of this resolution with a Boone County auditor. And finally, the resolution would be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Can you read the years, the breakdown of the years as well?
Yes, Mayor. Breakdown of the years specifically, it will go in four tiers. Year one would be 50%. Year two would be 50%. Year three, 25%. And finally, year four, 25%.
Thank you, Chris. All right, now that the resolution has been read, discussion from council? Any public comment concerning the resolution? Okay. I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2018-43.
I move we approve Resolution 2018-43.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Resolution 2018-43 is approved. Bob, Molly, thank you for coming, and great to see Steel Green starting up here in Lebanon, and hope you guys, wish you guys the best of luck going forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next up is ordinance 2018-18. Now, Ben, I want a question. So we have a couple of these. You want to do these all as one or separately?
We can. This is all came through with the same petitioner.
I separated them out because they weren't contiguous to each other, so that was cleaner to take them as separate ordinances, but they are all essentially one in the same.
Okay, so how about, let's present them, how about, can you present them as one?
Yeah, I can present them as one.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, so I, I think I'll just start this by suggesting that this, these annexations are not due to some sort of pending development. This is merely, my understanding is, is a, a marketing effort to basically take step one out of the process for anybody who might want to develop these in the future to say that the annexation is already done. You, you don't have to go through that step before you could come into the planning office for, for, you know, looking at development plans for the future. So, so this is, none of these properties has a pending development in any way, shape, or form. This is merely just that effort to get that first step done for anybody who might want to develop them in the future. So just a quick, the first property or series of properties is on Wit Road. Ooh, that doesn't look very good, does it? Is on Wit Road, just north of the existing city limits.
Can you zoom out a little bit?
Yeah.
It's pretty tight in there. Here we go.
This is on Wit Road, just north of the existing residential area. As Sum Brook, the neighborhood that we're familiar with, it's going to start hopefully developing the next few months, is just to the northeast of here. This is a series of property that the, the Jackson family still owns, that, uh, has been marketed for residential development, but without it being in city limits, there's no guarantee of utilities. So they wanted to get that first step done in that process to market as being within city limits. So this is the first one. This is, I want to say it's about 15 to 20 acres total. I think it's maybe even less than that, but it's, it's somewhere in that 15-acre range here. Uh, that was, that would be 2018-18, that ordinance. 2018-19 is up on 300 North, just a little bit west of 25 East. Due south of here, it would be the, the hospital. This is about a six or six and a half acre piece here on the north side of 300 North. I think the intent is over time to annex, the SLH Farms owns all the property to the north here. I think the intent over time is to annex the rest of that property, but this is the largest parcel that we, that could, that was, met the contiguity requirements for annexation. So they're starting with this six-acre piece on the north side of 300 North. So that's, that's ordinance 2018-19. 2018-20 is just a little bit to the east of that, and that's what you see represented here. Let me go out a little bit further. I've got all kinds of glare going on here. This property, this, this is on both sides of 300 North. The property to the south is about 90 acres. That is what's owned by the hospital. And then to the north here is then some additional Jackson property. So we, we are aware that the hospital is going through a master planning exercise right now. So while I don't know what their future plans might, master plans might be for this property, I do know they're going through that exercise, and they had agreed to get this property annexed now, again, something that will benefit them in the future if and/or when they, they decide they do want that property developed. Same for the Jacksons, it's, it's merely an exercise to bring them into city, so that, to get that step done. So this is, I believe, about 120 acres.
And so to clarify, just to orient everyone, so this is across the street from Auburn Meadows?
Uh, yes, Auburn Meadows is to the east.
To the east, okay, that southern part, and then it kind of goes north behind 39?
Yep. 25 East is, is kind of runs along the western boundary here. Existing hospital is just to the southwest of here. I think you can see a little bit of the YMCA just on the corner of the map. The final one, 2018-21. Oops. Here we go. This is also related to the hospital. These are the series of six properties that they've purchased along State Road 39. Their, their main entrance to the hospital is just to the south of here. So they have annexed these properties, or annexed, they have purchased these properties, they're all under with them ownership now, and they're just seeking to get those annexed and incorporate them into the, into the hospital site. So everything you see to the, to the east of there, north of the, of the existing development is all hospital-owned. So they're just incorporating that into development of the hospital, and like I said, they're, they're master planning this entire site as we speak. And my, my expectation is, is we're trying to set up a meeting with them sometime in the next month or so to kind of start taking a look at that and see what their plans are for the near future, but there are no immediate plans for these properties now.
Okay.
In terms of the, the other pieces, these have all gone to the Plan Commission for recommendations of zoning, and you'll find those in each one of those ordinances. Uh, and then we've also identified the appropriate council district for each one of the properties as well. Those are in each one of those ordinances. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about these.
Any questions for Ben?
No questions for Ben, maybe some talking about the council districts as we go forward. I'm a large member, so no, no, no thing here, but, um, as we annex more territory, we need to start thinking about redistricting down the road as well.
I think the plan is, we probably wait till the 2020 census and then do a redistricting after we have the accurate counts, but unless, unless the council's done it a different way in the past.
Are you all, I think all of those are going to District Four, correct? Your district, Dick, is that correct?
Yeah, they're all going to be in my district, it's like, yeah. I don't have a problem right now.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I see is that far territory, maybe touching John's district a little bit, too, but I think most of it probably would fall in Four.
The, the first one on Wit Road does go into District Three.
District Three?
Yeah.
Got you.
Uh, but the rest are all District Four.
You put, you did put it to District Three, I didn't see that.
Yeah, the one on Wit Road is District Three.
Can you show that property again, please?
Yep, sure can.
Are you sure? Because the last, I think, the last annexation we did, we stuck in District Four, which touches that as well, correct?
That one changed. I think the one, I, I have to go back and look, but I, I did the same one because we had, the original one proposed, change back to District Three, I think. I'm not 100% on that, though, but I'll have to double-check that. We can get that adjusted by next meeting if it needs to.
Yeah, the lines kind of jogged through there, because I used to be District Four when I was on council before, and it moved.
Okay, I just want to make sure you get anything right, you know, and we can move forward, so, okay.
My, my only comment would be for the Plan Commission to really be careful not to take too many of these like this to where we create an island or somebody that's not annexed into the city. In other words, this one's got, can't tell what his last name is, but Randy somebody, who's kind of outside city limits right now.
Right, yeah, it's not necessarily.
We want to get away from that.
Yeah.
We want to get away from those pockets. It's kind of like, bring them in, or...
Yeah. Right, right now, we're doing 100% voluntary, right?
I know these people want to bring it in for a thing, but we need to try to get that person to come in and...
Yep. So, so right, right now, what we've been doing is 100% voluntary annexation. See, we're receiving petitions for all these, so I, but I totally understand your position on that as well.
It's easy, easy on farm ground to do that, so, yeah.
Okay. I will do public hearings for all of these before official public hearings, but also if there's any comments on the overall annexations, if anyone wanted to speak on those at this time, feel free to step forward. Okay. At this time, then, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-18, which is the council to consider the Wit Road voluntary annexation of the City of Lebanon. Okay, seeing no sudden movements, I'm going to close the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-18. At this time, I'll also open the ordinance, or the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-19. Okay, we'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-19. We'll now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-20. Still no sudden movements. We'll close the public hearing on 2018-20, and finally, we'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-21.
Last chance.
Okay. And I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-21. Okay, now we'll have Chris read the ordinances. The first up will be the 2018-18.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The City of Lebanon's Common Council has the authority and desires to annex lands into the municipality as defined by the Indiana Code. 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for annexation for this ordinance have filed voluntary petition with this council. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on October 15, 2018. The commission forwarded docket 18-41 to this council with a favorable recommendation eight zero to assign the single-family residential SF zoning classification for the annexation area. The council has conducted a public hearing just now, as required by law. The council has adopted a fiscal plan for the, or, uh, will adopt a fiscal plan for the annexation of the annexation area in accordance with the Indiana Code. The council now finds the statutory criteria for annexation have been met, and if approved by this council, the following would be found. Number one, the annexation area would be declared annexed to and declared part of the City of Lebanon, Indiana. The annexation area is to further include the contiguous public highways and rights of way of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area pursuant to the Indiana Code. This annexation area would be assigned to Council District Three and would become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance. The annexation area would be hereby assigned a single-family residential SF zoning classification. And finally, this ordinance would be in full force and effect upon its passage by the council, publication of the ordinance, and the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period, all as provided by the laws of the state of Indiana.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Ordinance 2018-18 has not been read on first hearing. We will hear it at our next council meeting. Will you please read Ordinance 2018-19?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The City of Lebanon Common Council has the authority and desires to annex lands into the municipality as defined by the Indiana Code. 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for this annexation have filed a voluntary petition with the city council pursuant to the Indiana Code. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at their scheduled meeting on October 15, 2018. The commission forwarded docket 18-42 to this council with a favorable recommendation eight zero to assign the single-family residential SF zoning classification to the annexation area. The council has just conducted a public hearing this evening, as required by law. The council will adopt a fiscal plan for the annexation of the annexation area in accordance with the Indiana Code. If approved by the council, the following would be found. The annexation area would be annexed to and declared to be part of the City of Lebanon. The annexation area would further include the contiguous public highways and rights of way of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area. The annexation area is hereby, would hereby be assigned to Council District Four and would become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance. The annexation area would be assigned the single-family residential SF zoning classification, and this ordinance would be in full force and effect upon the passage by the council, its passage by the council, publication of the ordinance, and upon the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period, all as provided by the laws of the state of Indiana.
Thank you, Chris. Ordinance 2018-19 has been read on first reading. Now move on to 2018-20, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The City of Lebanon has the authority and desires to annex lands into the municipality as defined by the Indiana Code. 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for this annexation have filed voluntary petition with the council. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on October 15, 2018. The commission forwarded docket 18-42, excuse me, 43, to this council with a favorable recommendation eight zero to assign the single-family residential SF, single-family residential SF II, and planned business commercial PBC zoning classifications for the annexation area. The council yet this evening, just this evening, conducted a public hearing, as required by law. The council will adopt a fiscal plan for the annexation of the annexation area in accordance with the Indiana Code. If ordained by this council, the following would be found. The annexation area would be hereby declared annexed to and declared part of the City of Lebanon. The annexation area would further include the contiguous public highways and rights of way of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area. The annexation area would be assigned to Council District Four and would become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of the ordinance. The annexation area would be assigned the single-family residential SF, single-family residential SF II, and planned business commercial PBC zoning classifications. Finally, the ordinance would be in full force and effect upon its passage, its publication, and upon the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period, all as provided by the laws of the state of Indiana.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Ordinance 2018-20 has been read on first reading. And finally, will you please read Ordinance 2018-21?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the City of Lebanon's Common Council has the authority and desires to annex lands into the municipality, 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for annexation have filed a voluntary petition with the council pursuant to the Indiana Code. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on October 15, 2018. That commission forwarded docket 18-44 to the council with a favorable recommendation eight to zero to assign the planned business commercial zoning classification for the annexation area. The council has just conducted a public hearing, as required by law, with regard to the annexation area. The council will adopt a fiscal plan for the annexation of the annexation area, as required by the Indiana Code. If passed by the city council, the following would be found. The annexation area would be annexed to and declared a part of the City of Lebanon, Indiana. The annexation area is to further include the contiguous public highways and rights of way of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area. The annexation area would be assigned to Council District Four and shall, and would become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of the ordinance. The annexation area would be assigned the planned business commercial or PBC zoning classification. Finally, the ordinance would be in full force and effect upon passage by this council, its publication, and upon the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period, all as provided by the laws of the state of Indiana.
Thank you, Chris. That ordinance is now, ordinance 2018-21 has been read on first reading. That concludes what I have under my new business. Is there anything from council concerning new business? Okay. Any public comment? Please step forward. We need you to come back from there.
I thought the 150-some acres on Route 300 was going to be up tonight, it's in April 13, is that right?
They can only hear you if you have the microphone, I'm sorry.
The 300 annexation for development of 300 East, I think it was both sides of the road, 150-some-odd acres is, I thought that was scheduled for tonight.
Ben, did you have that?
Yeah. The 158, and it's going to be annexed.
Well, it's just been read on first reading. If you have any public comment concerning it?
I beg your pardon?
It, it's just been read on first reading, so we haven't voted on anything yet. Do you have a public comment concerning it?
Yes.
Okay, then feel free to...
Ma'am, would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Sandra Breedlove, and I live on 300 West.
Where, where at?
And I beg your pardon?
Where at, on 300 West, your address?
725.
Thank you.
And as you know, your plans, most recent plans were for having a bypass to relieve traffic in Lebanon for 300. So there's been no final decision, as far as I know, regarding that plan. So I'm questioning where you're at. There was three positions, one for 250, one for 300, going over, this is 300 going to 400 East, and one-sixth of a mile north of 300 were the three ones that were presented. So where are you at on that? When the state was involved, the expense for, uh, was rather exceeding, and you were going to need state and federal money for that. So where are you at on that thinking?
Kevin, do you want to talk about the, I know you gave the Board of Works update about the interchange feasibility study. Do you want to explain where that is today?
Of course. So the interchange feasibility study is, is just that, is a feasibility study to determine the most feasible option for a new interchange access location somewhere in the 300 area. That study proposed a potential new interchange, I would say roughly in the 375 area. There's, there's not a 375 that crosses the interstate. I'm just referring to an area a half to three-quarters of a mile north of the existing 300 overpass. That feasibility study has been adopted and accepted by, by this body, and now the, the project really will just await funding or further direction or, or funding from the state or federal level. So the state of Indiana Federal Highway has that study. We know that they have had previous studies of their own that have, that have voiced an interest to provide access in that location, and so our study was just done so that we can have a voice in how they make those decisions going forward. What I spoke about at the Board of Works meeting earlier tonight was just to mention an update there. The state has encouraged us to submit for their upcoming call through their notice of funding availability for federal funds that are distributed to the local public agencies through, through NDOT, through the Crawfordsville District of NDOT. Our LPA, or Local Public Agency Coordinator, has, has encouraged us to go ahead and, and submit that project for consideration. That grant funding application is due on December 7th, so we are meeting with our consultants right now to determine the scope of the actual project that we may submit. If you remember, the feasibility study outlined a, a real multi-phase... If you remember, the feasibility study outlined a real multi-phase approach to that project. So there is the interchange, there's the interchange project as well as the relocation of 52 and the relocation of 39. So there's a lot to that. I'm not certain that we would submit the entire project, but maybe just a portion of those projects. That's what we're going to discuss with our consultant and figure out what is the most, the best way forward in this application process. Again, this is a funding request. It's a grant request to the state of Indiana that is for federal highway funds. These are funds that are allocated for fiscal year 2024. So if we were successful, and we would find out sometime in January if we are successful, the earliest that that money would be available to us would be 2024, with the possible exception of an expedited project that could make funding available in 2023. But again, it's a long way off, and there's a local funding component to that that we'll have to meet as well. So there's, there's a lot of ifs that go into this, this question that we're, we're trying to, to solve. And, but that's what we're meeting with our consultants for. We'll keep the council and, and other entities updated on that as we move forward. But we are anticipating submitting some form of funding request on the 12/7 deadline.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. So...
Kevin, the clarifying clarification, if you're saying it's the bypass would be north of 300, is what you're thinking of?
Well, it would, that would remain to be seen. The feasibility study did, did outline several different options. The, the most feasible option that that study came forward with was a, was a location that would be a new road on new, on a new road corridor. So it's not a reconstruction along the existing 300 North corridor. It would be a new road across farmland somewhere north of there. Again, I caution everyone that that's a feasibility study. That's maybe the best location that evidence is pointing to when they look at environmental, historical, archaeological, when they look at all those different components that the state will weigh as they would develop that project. But the project would be defined by the state. And right now, there is no project defined, so I couldn't tell you definitively that the alignment that's shown in the feasibility study will be the actual location. Right now, it's, it's the location that we've submitted to, to continue the conversation. But until funding is, is approved for a project such as that, there's no telling. Once funding would be approved, there'd be several other steps of planning, several other steps that would involve public input before they would actually set a physical alignment, before they would even be, begin designing such a road project. So there's a long way to go. Like I said, 2024 is, is when the funding would be available, and it would, in my estimation, it would probably take us every bit of that timeframe, the next four years, to be ready for, for, for that. There's a lot of environmental studies, a lot of environmental documents that have to be prepared, that have to be approved in Washington. This is not a simple or, or uncomplicated project. So it'll take some time before we would know exactly what the alignment looks like, what the, how the funding would be completely laid out, and certainly before any project would be approved.
Okay. Hey, Kevin?
Can I address that, please?
Sure, please.
Well, as some of you know, I petitioned against using 300 for a four-lane bypass. I understand the city's needs. You do have a need. However, when we purchased the property that we live on now, it was zoned agricultural and residential on both sides of at least, I know, to the tracks from 39, okay? And there are residents on both sides of 300 now onto 52. So the petition that I presented was for at least 52 or 53 residential areas. Some of them had two signatures, some of them had only one, but there were multiple family members in those homes. They bought into a country environment, agricultural environment. And as I understand it, the resolution that you're, you're addressing is for the east side of 300. So out of respect for, it's going to be a residential area that is going to be, they're wanting annexation for, is that correct?
Ben, are you, which, which resolution was it, or ordinance was it for?
The 158.
Yeah, I think it's 2018-20.
20, which was what zoning?
The recommendation for zoning for that area was primarily residential. There was a small piece of it that the hospital owns, that they wanted to be planned business commercial because it's directly adjacent to the hospital, but most of it was recommended for residential zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's 150 acres?
Yeah, that's this here.
Okay. Well, the thing that I think would be respectful is to let, if that is developed residential, to make, before you pass the residential, okay, that you allow them to know where the 300 four-lane bypass is going to be. Because with it now being agricultural primarily and residential, they may be buying, if they don't know that, they may be buying into something that they might later on regret. I think a lot of the people that I was petitioning didn't want a bypass because if, with your presentation, it was about $11,000 vehicles a day, including semis, to get them out of your center of your community. And even if it's a sixth of a mile north of where the current 300 is, that may not be desirable. So, you know, that decision should be made before you continue with a residential and then let those people that are going to buy into that area know what they're investing in. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. All right. Any other public comment? Okay. This time would move on to claims and would entertain a motion. Anyone? Do we want to pay our city, city bills or not? No?
I'll make the motion to pay the claims and put a hold on one of them, check 5114.
Which one is that?
That's the one on paying the rainy day fund for comprehensive plan. I don't know where that can come from.
That, that was money that you approved last year for our comprehensive plan project out of the rainy day fund.
I thought all that money went back into the rainy day fund.
It was obligated to the project last year and then encumbered to this year.
That's what I'm saying. How can it be this year, even though it was last year? Because we put it all back...
Well, it was approved last year, but we didn't pay them all $100,000 last year.
Yeah, there was, there was an encumbrance placed on it.
There was an encumbrance at the end.
It actually didn't start until this year, did it?
Yeah, we really didn't even start until like February or March of this year. So it was approved last year out of rainy day and then encumbered to 2018 so we could pay the bills as we move forward this year.
Okay, I'll take the hold off then.
Okay. So we have motioned to pay all the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All of us here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, claims are approved. Any announcements?
Yes. I will not be at the next meeting.
All right.
Okay? And I think December, we usually only probably have one.
I think we're only going to have our first meeting. Yes, correct.
We'll probably only have one next year.
Okay.
Just wanted to make that known to our board.
Yep. Okay. Any other announcements? Okay. Would entertain a motion adjourned?
So moved.
We have motioned adjourned. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All of us here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thanks for watching. Our next meeting will be Monday, November 26.